God, this is damn.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've got a plan for some major renovations today.
Yeah. It was a good program. It's like eight and nine to six places. Mark Farber, we're thousands of people. Some 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 history and digital.
I know really it's hard to know a lot of.
But they have a lot of issues with the pretty good effort. What do you get here? Is it a lot?
I mean, is there a lot of differences in how they function?
I didn't make the transition around it. It was a little difference exactly. But it's, yeah, no, it's a totally different. It's only three D's. So you've got to load everything here. You've got to go ahead. You've got to make the walls out. You've got to do better than you. You know, some of the private that go. I still. Yeah.
Yeah.
One year later, this doctor, he's like a big man over ten years. They got white land. It's like. First started up here.
Yeah.
He was like the fifth man over ten years.
The only thing she's like the people who were.
There's no view of keep that. It was double thing. But that's what's true. Same as. He allowed to be a bit. You're working there. And you have to use it. Yeah. I'm not here for that. I have one. Six grand. You still. Yeah.
Yeah. Just have a way of like.
So we've been exposed, but I mean, talking old. And all the energy.
I had that, you know. A little bit of. Pretty much family, you know. We're. We have a copy. I took her. And she was. Yeah. I did second. I was. Well, we all. Well, thirteen or so. Twelve was the first on that. So I told Lori that. And she said. I definitely. I'm sorry. I should have come out the night before. And she says. It's something. She said maybe she still sounds that I don't. I don't. They're still. I'm very bored. I might just say. I'm. Yeah. I want to tell them. I'm drafting myself.
Yeah, that was pretty amazing.
Yeah. I'll talk to them. You go through this. Here's what I.
Thank you.
Look like.
Okay, it's six thirty. We'll follow meeting order. I'll be going to call. Counselperson Martin. Here. Counselperson Hobart. Here. Counselperson Lala. Here. Counselperson. Counselperson. Phil, can I say the first?
I would like to say my name. United States of America. And to a republic which stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, evergreen, and justice for all.
Is everybody signed? Everyone wants to pick on behalf of. Okay. I'll seek a motion to approve the consent agenda. How much is the consent here?
Oh, better.
I moved the second to approve the consent agenda. We'll vote. Counselperson Martin. Yes. Counselperson Hobart.
Yes.
Counselperson Lala.
Yes.
Counselperson. Patrick.
Yes.
Counselperson. And. Yes. So we're going to staff reports. Looks like the. Okay, Works Director has done a written report. We have a report from the Sheriff's Office. Building Inspector has a written report. I think all the reports in the back there.
No, but they were uploaded online except for the parks. Um, that one you receive a little later.
And the administrators written report. Mayor has nothing to report this evening. And Board members, library update. Al, you have something for us?
Yeah, I can give you a quick update. So we had our fun run on Friday the second as part of Urbana Days. And we raised over a thousand dollars in back. We had thirty plus runners. And then we also had thirtyish people for the little mile walk. So it was a really, really good event. Really happy how that came out. And then we got our librarian started up here on the seventh. And we had forty-three patients in the last fourteen hours. We didn't open, kind of open the business. So we're off to a roaring start. We've got great activities on the calendar. So just again, keep up with us on the Urbana Library Board. Yeah. Great. Check us out.
Any questions for Al? Thank you, Al.
You go.
Parks and Recreation update?
Um, I'm just trying to see if anybody from the scheme. So the written report, it wasn't on, but they did have the touch a truck event at Urbana Days, which they said was a success. The park kiosk, which is an Eagle Scout project, is still targeted to finish by September one. Um, we're still talking to getting a quote for cameras for the park, Vet Memorial, Library, and City Hall, which is City Hall Vet Memorial combo. Um, all current Parks Board members' terms are up in November. All members need to be approved by council for the next three-year term. Not sure who will be seeking another term. So I did get an email out to them asking who is willing to serve another term for the Parks Board. Um, Park Playground Equipment One-to-One Competitive Match Grant. Um, I submitted that on behalf of the Parks and Rec Department. And happy to report, we did get an email this morning that we did receive the grant for new playground equipment. Um, so that's really exciting. Uh, actually, we even have conversations happening right now with the city engineer too for the final rendering of the, what the equipment would look like. Um, Park Pollinator Rain Garden Reap Grant. Um, I presented the grant yesterday at the Benton County Conservation to the Reap Committee. And that was submitted today for Phase One, which was seeking funding for seventy-five thousand dollars. So that was submitted today. Um, the next Park Board meeting is August nineteenth. And Carrie Burkhart will actually be attending the Parks Meeting because the Little Lions are looking to do a tree grant and pollinator type project. So she'll be reporting.
Thank you.
Was there anything from any of the written reports question that you would like me to take back to department heads?
And we have a city engineer written report update. Anything else you need to add there?
I don't think so. Making questions?
Okay. Let's go on to Old Business. Third reading of ordinance nine twenty-one, chapter ninety-two water rates.
Do you want to do this for public input? Just in case.
Yeah, was there anybody that had any public input on that?
For what?
Yeah.
Yes. You have all these clerical errors. You have all these raises, higher taxes. Now you want higher bills, but you're spending all this money, which is ours. Why don't you give the city of Urbana a break on that? Instead of taking all our money and throwing it up?
Well, I can answer some of that.
I mean, your pan, Benton County Sheriff's Office, come in like twelve hours a week now? Instead of two and a half, your pan, a peace officer, that's on leave or however that's set up right now. Where's the city getting all the money? If you add in the pockets where everybody gets raises?
It has nothing to do with that.
Everything else is going up. You're spending all kinds of money. So everything. High rates, well, that high water taxes will even high.
Our water rates have went up since nineteen or two thousand.
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty.
Were you checking around with other communities on what their mammals are? Because they are higher or they're lower than what Urbana's are.
Actually, there's a lot of them a lot higher than ours is.
Because they don't want to pay less over there. And then you have clerical errors to where people get five, six hundred dollar water bills.
I can't answer that.
And then you have to go, you have to drive, check out the place, make sure there's no water leak, get back with them once a reading. Who's paying me to do that for you?
I'm not sure what you're talking about, John.
Okay, I got a call. About my water bill. Twenty-four thousand eight hundred gallon used. I pulled another bill back from January. Said my previous sixteen thirty-seven. Back in January, previous sixteen thirty-seven. Where's this clerical error?
I can speak of it. So he is a landlord and he owns the property.
I still use water. I still pay him monthly, but.
Definitely. And so I did call G Works and it didn't reset. And I did not do that when you're a landlord. It goes back to him being a landlord. It didn't do his previous reading. It did it from when he cut it previously. For some reason, it didn't connect. And the previous and the present reading were in.
So it's another company?
We did find that out and we talked about it.
It's our accounting system.
It's another.
It's the accounting system.
It's our software. We. For the.
But it's been taken care of.
Yeah.
And weren't you called the same day? Were you called the same day that after you received your bill and we?
No, it was one day.
We contacted.
And we.
Okay.
You make my.
But we contacted you, correct? Melissa contacted you before you knew the water bill was even over. Um, that, that is actually a part of our software to alert the customers if the usage has increased, especially if it's increased by that much. Because typically that means there's either a clerical error or there's error on the meter, which is rarely the case, or the consumption, which maybe someone left the hose on or there was water running.
So it shouldn't have checked before you called me. To make sure there was no clerical error.
Um.
I mean, you do reviews on other employees every year. Do those employees get raises? No.
So you're, so.
They get put on leave.
Just, just one minute. So of the five hundred and fifty-one bills that just went out, your bill was the only error that we had. And it was, and Armin, excuse me, Armin, there were two bills that had an error. They're both here. And, um, no, we, we do not go recheck after the meters read through the radio. We don't check every single one.
You can all throw a flag, but you would throw the flag at all things. But it doesn't throw a flag.
Which is why.
It checks your software.
It does.
I mean, you're busy on the computer all the time.
Didn't.
I mean, you want to hire another assistant. Or you want a full-time assistant?
I guess I don't know what you're talking about there either.
That's the thing. I've been here. I'll.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, John.
For what? Where's my tree? What about my tree that I never received? A call from Trenton. Only thing I heard was who planted that tree? I don't know who planted that tree. The tree was there when I bought the house.
I don't know. I'll have to get with Trenton and find out and get with you.
Because I did call the city.
Okay. I'll get with.
And I'm about it. And he said, well, Trenton will be calling you. This is a good number. And then, but who planted the tree? I don't know who planted the tree. I'm sure he was there before I bought the house.
Okay.
The reason that's asked is because in the ordinance, the city does not plant the trees on public property. So we have to ask, did you plant the tree? Or did the previous property owner plant the tree?
The tree's fifteen years old, bro.
Okay. So that's the recent rate question. So we have been following up with you, John, on both of your issues almost immediately.
I haven't heard no word about that tree.
Well, the tree might not be on the top of the list right now. And we did give the message to.
But not the way you garden to throw money away up there. Is that alley part of it? Or is that alley closed out? Because does it horse heat down?
I guess I'm not sure what you're.
What's that?
But we're on the, the issue of the water rates right now.
You know, Martin's got Sanders, who's going off to my right, which is the opposite.
Okay. But we will get with you on that tree. Thank you.
And is there a timeline when you get back?
But I'll get with Trenton. Okay, any more discussion on the curating ordinance nine twenty-one? There.
Oh. I'm saying many of us are senior citizens and we're on fixed income. Uh, you, a while back, you had our water property success. I saw that. And you raised my property that lead forty-four thousand. Now you're going to raise my water bill by ten dollars. You realize what you're doing to people that are on fixed income? And also, my wife hadn't retired from work because of cancer. And now, like I said, between taxes through my property and then you're raising my water bill, you're going to make it very tight on a lot of senior citizen members. So that's kind of what my, uh, what I'm trying to say is you need to look at maybe the senior citizen, what your income is and what you're doing.
Okay, thank you, Kate.
I want to speak in my name. Everybody else.
Anyone else?
I just want a quick question. The ten dollars, but is there a rate change too?
What is the ten dollar?
Yes.
Oh, you put down the ten dollars.
We just put nineteen and seventeen or twenty-three.
Nineteen dollars and seventeen cents on the first two thousand will now be twenty-three dollars. And the two thousand one and over gallons used per month goes from eight dollars to nine dollars and sixty cents.
Are we able to access that? Is that like on the line? Those numbers?
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you're asking.
You posted the ordinance change on the website.
Yes, so there's.
For the.
Um, in three locations. It's, there's also copies in the foyer and, um, I believe it's also on the website under tonight's agenda.
She was just asking about the dollars. What would she?
Those numbers that you were quoting, is there, where can I look those up at?
Yeah, so I think it's online. Otherwise, we have copies out there. I'm sure Melissa can grab one for anybody that wants one throughout the foyer.
But the numbers are in the ordinance. Like it lists what the current rate is.
Oh.
Not for what?
It just shows.
No, it probably doesn't show that. Um, I, I can post that though. I mean, word and email it.
I mean, if you just posted what you. Where it said there's like.
Yeah.
Any more questions on this?
We gotta have our name on this to make a comment on that water thing?
No. Can write it down if you want to stand up and give it your name?
I, I'm not gonna stand. Well, I'm not gonna walk over here. I'm kind of injured, but I'll stand up. Jason Harris, five oh five Moore Street. I just gotta say, I'm not in a position where I'm gonna be bitching about no ten dollars to fifteen, thirty bucks for a water bill. Thank God. But I've been in that spot where thirty bucks would have put me in the whorehouse for a water bill. And so I can sympathize with the folks that ten dollars is gonna hurt them. It sucks. Thank God I'm not in that situation. But I know that there was a comment made by somebody in this room where use less water or something to that tune, which is a heartless, heartless kind of compliment. I can imagine him, somebody. So just keep that in mind, city council. When you guys are talking about rate increases and only ten dollars. Damn, only ten dollars. My kids, only twenty bucks need their death. Twenty bucks is a lot of money these days, especially to some folks, like this suburban senior citizen. They sit them, my God. Spend, spend another folks' money is a terrible responsibility. You know, put some thought into it when you do it. That's all I can say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I guess the theory of the public input. The way Elder does not hear and I did call him. He said that there's two different issues. One was that apparently he reads the Times. I'm guessing I did not. I don't get the Times. But he said that in the Times, it's posted what the agenda was. It was not posted what the Minnesota meetings, previous meetings was. And then also, he said that the ditch on Rush Avenue, north of Cape Rim Place, in the bottom of the ditch, he said there are trees growing up. It's looking like a disaster. And he wanted to bring that to the council's attention so that maybe we can tell trainer or I can cut down the chainsaw or something.
Um, what, what did you say the first part is?
He said the first part was in the paper that the publicized grant in the paper was of the agenda. There was no minutes of the meeting. Publicized in the, in the paper, so.
And the one that we just got on Friday?
Well, I don't know which one he saw. I don't get a paper, but he didn't clarify which copy he was talking about. He just said, check the Minnesota meeting. And it wasn't the Minnesota meeting.
I have to go get it. I have to call, call location.
So I don't know which, which copy.
You said it was in the Avignon Times or Cedar Valley Times?
I'm assuming that. Denver, I don't know if he gets the Times or is that or what he gets. But he just said that the paper showed the agenda and it shows the Minnesota meeting.
It would have been published at that time.
We don't publish the agenda in the paper. We publish some.
I thought it was an error, but he said that's what, that's making up.
He's claiming, or he's.
He's saying that they have published it was in the. And then what was the address for the, the trees in the ditch?
I didn't give an answer. It's, it's a place I had to make a notice. Uh, it would be from Bell Street and Rush Avenue and to the east. A little bit across from Keesley's House there.
And you said there's trees in the ditch?
There are smaller, you're throwing in the bottom of the ditch. They're getting, they're volunteer trees. I'm sure that there must be. The racers, they're, they're wrong for that.
He mowed them all off the other page and ditching. Maybe that is, he mowed half for long. You'd have to drive down there to see what it looks like. But you did mow that front of our trees that have been grown.
And then was there a second round meeting to see what, what still might need to be cleaned or mowed or whatever? But it has been.
There has been. There's actually been more than two. I'm wondering if it's sound growing. I guess.
It's, it's down to a few. Yeah. It's very good. I was very happy with that.
Actually, only two, I think.
Yeah. Okay, going back to Old Business from the third reading of the ordinance.
Um, for the third reading of the ordinance, at the second reading, you asked that I get a description of the, actually, I think a citizen asked for a description in the ordinance of the capital fee, the ten dollar capital fee. Um, accounts will be assessed with a capital improvement. We have ten dollars monthly to support development, necessary water system, infrastructure improvements, and expansion. Um, and that did go through EC Cogit as well for the language.
Can you reread the rates changes again?
Yeah. Uh, so previously, the gallons used per month, the first two thousand, the minimum was nineteen dollars seventeen cents for the rate. And that is an increase to twenty-three dollars, which I believe is twenty percent. Um, the two thousand one and over gallons used per month was eight dollars per one thousand and that increases nine dollars and sixty cents. And then, of course, the capital, flat capital fee of ten dollars each month is new ordinance, ordinance.
Make a motion to approve. I'll second the motion. It moved in the second to approve the third reading. And we will vote, Councilperson Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilperson Lala.
Yes.
Councilperson Martin, yes. Councilperson Mendel, yes. Councilperson Holos, yes.
Okay, and with that, as the third reading, the effective date?
The city doesn't care about citizens a little bit.
Actually, we do.
At ten dollars, so that's what we can just come around.
Well, gentlemen, if we don't do this, John, there will be a kind of rate increase and it will be years down the road. We, we, uh, the damage from that's gonna be a lot greater, it's gonna be a lot more, we just need to keep up the pace.
I mean, it doesn't bother me, but you got a lot of citizens in this town that's elderly that are on fixed incomes. And jumping up to take fifteen dollars a month. Oh, their food prices went up, they can't afford it. And it's not how much water they use. What was your four, did you hear?
Did you have something else you wanted to argue with and move on?
No, I got it.
You talked about whether.
Yes, so effective, would this be something that we would increase for the, Melissa, do, would you print? August one? I mean, I know, would you print for August, or?
September.
Next building cycle, sorry. July twenty-sixth? Or, excuse me, August.
August.
August twenty-sixth. So then, August twenty-sixth printing would be for September, correct?
Yes.
So effective, September first?
Eighty twenty-six printing the water use. I have a recommendation.
Yes.
To September twenty-sixth, maybe?
Like, that would be my recommendation.
Oh, I see what you mean. So then it will be billed on the water after today. Got you, yeah. Okay, so that would be a September twenty-sixth.
June.
October one, effective rate. Right?
Right, so. Well, where are we?
That's where, yeah, so we're back.
I think you're, the words that you're mixing up is effective date. It would be effective starting September first, for the meeting on September twenty-sixth. The bill will go out from October one. Where the years are around the twentieth of October one.
Right, so what I'm saying is, it's actually effective on your bill October one. Correct? Yes.
Right.
Ready?
You're gonna, you're gonna, the twentieth of August usage through September twenty. Usage.
Correct, yes. So effective on, they, the, I think what I mean is, when we say effective, when it's effective on their bill, when the cut, when the consumers will see it, when our community members see it, so October one. Okay. Is that what you guys are all thinking?
Okay. This, uh, due part of the new business, we won't write items to, item A, consider resolution twenty, twenty-four day, forty-eight to approve. Sidney, and I don't want to mispronounce her last name.
Watkins North.
Watkins North, is the library board trustee member.
Thank you. Can you just speak real, real quickly? So we had our longest standing member, Janice Eldred, uh, step down from the library board. So she's been on the board for twenty plus years, I'm not even quite sure how long. So we had a vacancy and Sidney decided to step up to the call, so you want to give a little bit about yourself?
Sure, I, um, I work in the school district. I'm an instructional coach. I've grown up in the community. I have two small children. My husband's a teacher in the district as well, so I'm excited for this new opportunity.
Thank you for all the hearing. Make a motion to approve.
One second.
Then motion by Josh. Then vote in the second, we'll vote, Councilperson Martin, yes. Councilperson Lala?
Yes.
Councilperson Mendel?
Yes.
Councilperson Vasquez?
Yes.
And Councilperson Holos? Yes. Item B, consider resolution twenty, twenty-four day, forty-nine to approve, this figure, twenty twenty-four agreement between the city of Urbana and the Benton County Sheriff's Office. And that's for increased hours, I think currently we do two point five hours a week and go to twelve hours per week.
Correct, so this is the same contract that we have had with Benton County Sheriff's Office for several years. Um, it's been at two point five. It's been suggested at the last two council meetings that Mayor Benson contact Benton County Sheriff to increase hours of patrol for Urbana for, to twelve hours. Actually, I think you probably asked for more, but we, they settled on twelve. And, um, until things are worked out and conversations were had resolving a police department issue. Um, and this also.
It was approved yesterday by the county board supervisor. Almost to approve, resolution twenty twenty-four day, forty-nine. It moved in the second to approve twenty twenty-four day, forty-nine. We'll vote, Councilperson Martin, who, who seconded it? Hold it. I think we need some protection, should I say, yeah. Councilperson Lala?
No.
Councilperson Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilperson, um, Holos?
Yes.
Councilperson Mendel?
Yes.
And we will come back to item C. Glenn is awfully sick right now and so we're gonna, White Carey is gonna give an update for that, uh, Lions Fall Festival.
And she'll be coming up here anytime here after seven, after she closes the library, she said.
Yeah. We'll go to discussion items A, city property on Wood Street.
Um, so this is an inquiry, um, by a potential business person, developer, um, who has inquired, wondering if the, um, city property that is located on Wood Street right next to the ozone, um, if the two adjacent properties, if the city would be interested in selling the two properties um, to the person who, uh, I believe has made an offer on the building. And I believe he has mentioned that it will be closing sometime before November first, is all I know. But he wanted to know what the council's thoughts were, if they would entertain that idea
So just to clarify, there are three lots here. Johnson Concrete still owns one, even though we maintain it, which is another conversation. Um, I feel that until the ozone has been completed and it is a for sale foregone, that we should wait until it is a completed purchase.
Yeah, so this is not taking action. It was just to bring to the council to entertain the idea of possibly selling the property. I, I have already reached out to the other property owner, um, for that lot. At the time, he said he would be interested in possibly selling that to the city. Um, but if we were to get someone into the ozone who potentially wants to, um, add to that building, um, he just wanted to know if the city would likely entertain that or not entertain that because when properties are acquired, he would like to, it would help him put together a master plan to share with the council is what he wants to kind of have an idea for.
I would entertain seeing this master plan, I would, is I'm looking, like, is he looking at two, saying there's three lots, or is there two? Is he looking at taking all of that space or?
That would be, that he, that is what he, again, he has just shared this in conversation, that yes, it would be to acquire the two city properties next to the ozone in addition to, um, the Johnson property. Uh, and he, he has other properties on that block as well that he, it sounds like has, uh, purchase agreements for, uh, and just, uh, and putting together a plan, he would like to know if he, if that's an idea, he would include that in front of his, his plan.
I think knowing the, the master plan is, is paramount to any discussion about if we're serious or not. I think also, we, we've talked about updating ordinance as related to housing and rezoning. I think that's something that should be done before anything like that would happen, so.
It's hard to answer that one right now, I feel like. Um, yeah, so he, more than anything, probably just wants council to know that he has interest in the properties, um, and in other properties in the downtown. And he just wanted me to present that as a discussion item for hopefully here later in the future.
Currently, it's Chris, the old, the old building manager.
Um, so those are private, private properties. So I do not know if Russell Crest still owns the building. Um, I have been told through conversation that there is a purchase agreement for the Russell Crest building for the, uh.
Old Harbor.
Old Harbor, sort of, thank you. Um, as well as the, uh, potential ozone, which trying to close all those properties before November one is the information I have. Again, it's all private property, so this is simply, I'm just getting the information from the gentleman that is interested in those properties.
Do we have any time passed right now, or is it, is Gary, you have any questions?
Uh, no, so the day after the building inspector was here, so really what we're, we're waiting on, which I think I updated you guys via email, that I had sent an email to the structural engineer waiting for the report. Um, Russell Crest paid for half of the structural engineer, which was what he was to do. Um, we shredded his building permit check that he gave us because he's told us that he had an agreement to sell the property with the gentleman that was here.
So. You know, I guess I, I'm not alone to just lay aside and, and have Chris sneak out of that building, but it puts a lot, I mean, that's gonna put a lot of pressure on the new buyer.
He was here for the structural engineer, Walter.
He was there for that inspection.
He, he was there, uh, Russell was there, the structural engineer was there, Gary was there, I was there.
And Jerry.
And Jerry, yeah, Jerry Michael, who's there. So the person coming in to potentially buy the property is well aware of the property. Been in it a couple times already, and.
His intent is not making apartments out of, his intent is putting businesses in, in those rooms.
Have you ever heard anything back from the engineer, right?
No, um, called him Monday after I sent the email, did another follow-up on, I believe it was Monday, called his office and left a message. Um, it's my understanding, it's not unheard of, I mean, we have two engineers in the, I don't know. Uh, so it's been over thirty days. We're probably a little anxious for the report, um, but, I mean, I can't really speed it up anymore than just following the setup.
Well, yeah, I just sort of want to lay down on that, I think you're, go forward with this. That building's not in good shape.
Um, actually, uh, the building itself is not connected to the ozone, so like on either side, that crest building has its own interior wall. Um, so the inside obviously was what needed to be gutted, but actually, like, the back end of that is actually not in bad shape. So when the person goes in to gut that, it's, it's not like a total loss. He, he may even keep the outside of the building, it sounds like, to keep the old feel.
And the rear and side walls are good, just the roof and the floor.
And the floor is all the way down.
But it's, I mean, on the block, they could probably, you know, we didn't, we've got, and, we've got to really eye it, because.
Um, so I, I, I don't feel that I laid idle on it, I mean, I.
Well, I'm not saying that, Jennifer, I'm just saying that as a council right here, we don't.
Yeah.
I don't make a start just to, to lay back and stare and say, okay, what are you gonna do now? I mean.
To the new owner, you mean, if he.
To the new owner or the current owner.
Right, so I believe that our next step is really just waiting on the engineer report. And like I said, I, I did send him an email, I followed up with a phone call. Um, I don't really know what else I can do. I'll call again, obviously, and leave another message, but, um, I feel like once we get that report back, that'll give the old owner and the new owner in the city a good idea of what our next steps are going to have to be. It's my understanding, I mean, when we left, our building is still wooded up, um, for no ifs, for no and backs, and the bottom window, do you know?
I mean, I think, I understand what I'm saying, it's, even though it may get sold, we're not changing our position that it has to get fixed.
Correct, yeah. And I would say this person is well aware of that, I mean, he, he, he came to the meeting, he actually helped arrange the structural engineer because our last two backed out twice. Um, so I think.
There must be a reason for that, Jennifer. I bet there really is.
I don't know.
Okay, well, uh, Ian's here is here, he's going to check in for Glenn and give a, uh, update on the Lions on the October nineteenth Fall Festival.
Yeah, it's going to say, um, so we promised to give back to the community um, with, uh, the funds that we've received from the celebration. So one of the things that we're going to do is more community enrichment. So we're gonna start with Fall Festival. We'd like to do it at the Central Crossing Park. Um, we're gonna have barrel train car rides, um, some good old fashioned family fun games. We're gonna do a movie, an outdoor movie at dusk. Um, some cookie decorating, pumpkin decorating contest. We haven't finalized everything, we've kind of taken a break. But we'll, uh, we'll get to it. Um, I've been in contact with Lynn County Conservation, so we can get the permit we need to use a small portion of the trail for, uh, rides. And, uh, Black Hawk County Health Department to make sure we don't need any extra permits for cookie decorating, um, and we're all good.
How long will that, that line that'll impact? Is it gonna be in the house? Are we positioned to start our park?
I don't know. I don't know.
So, hoping. Hoping, if it's.
We may go to the library.
If it's just a good weekend project, then we'll have to just work around it. So hopefully it doesn't land on that weekend, but.
Um, so we're just finding out. So, we're just finding out, just finding out today that we did get the playground, um, grant, we started messaging Matt right away, trying to get with, um, the rendering of the final design for the actual equipment itself. And then, once we have that, I think the way for any factoring and ordering, once we order and purchase the equipment, is like six to eight weeks, just depending, um, and of course, then, before that, we would have that playground demo, which, um, would be removing the playground equipment, which could be done in half a day, I think it is what the full payment, um, and then, all the other stuff, Matt can speak to, with, uh, regarding the drainage issue, or what?
Yeah, I think some of the grading and paving and drainage improvements would, would be pretty disruptive to the part of the, but, I mean, it's a matter of timing, I guess, when, when things...
Do we have a backup plan?
We'll, we'll move it somewhere, I just don't know where, so, using the library's wifi for the outdoor movie is kind of necessity, but, um, we'll figure it out, so...
Is there a timeline that you're doing this, like, does it start at eight o'clock?
Three o'clock in the afternoon, um, I'm sorry, I didn't print out a flyer, uh, three o'clock in the afternoon, so, we're hoping for a movie to start about seven or seven-thirty, setting on the sun, and we'll conclude by nine.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Discussion item, revisit ordinance, chapter fifty-five, fifty-five point oh-five livestock.
Okay, so, um, previous to my time, um, it, the ordinance, it's my understanding, chapter fifty-five, um, fifty-five oh-five, actually, which, I don't know if you guys have this in your red folder or not, from something that I may have put there a while ago. I know I had it in mine, um, it's not at the Alonza, make your copy, but, um, it, it does say, it is unlawful for folks to keep livestock with the city, except in compliance with the city's zoning regulation. Under known circumstances, will chickens or roosters be allowed within city limits? So, I thought, we did have, um, two letters for nuisance abatement for properties that had chickens, and I wondered, uh, after speaking to, uh, some council members, that felt that maybe it was a good time to revisit, um, chickens in, within city limits, and allowing chickens in the city limits. I'm not sure, the conversations that were previously had, I don't know how much research was done by council, in terms of, um, neighboring communities that are now allowing chickens within the city, uh, ordinance, um, so, I would like to open the discussion, then, to council, uh, about allowing chickens, and I, just off the top of my, um, time, I did grab, which I'm sure you guys probably, or maybe didn't, I'm not sure, uh, review the ordinance, um, amendment that Center Point did, I grabbed Center Point's, just because it was short amount of time, but, um, Center Point's, and how they were at allowing chickens, which of course is hens only, no roosters, um, and what the permit actually looks like to allow residents to have chickens within the city limits, and, that's it. So, I won't do any more talking, but I will show, uh, what I have from Center Point, I do know there are other neighboring towns that are allowing chickens, and...
Yeah, Shelly, Shelly and, mostly Shelly and I drafted an ordinance last year, or, the last one, so, if there was one written, probably somewhere in the file, that we could, we could revisit, um, it gets pretty extensive and covered all of the bases, so, um...
For allowing the chickens?
For allowing chickens.
It was very, but it, I mean, it's drafted. So, um, yeah, so, I, I'm not sure what that looks like, I know Center Point didn't probably, I think, from the conversation I had with the city clerk, um, she said they didn't go so far as to writing a law within the ordinance, they left the ordinance somewhat generic, which you'll see on fifty-five oh-five livestock, how they were in, um, the amendment to allow the chickens, where they actually did was with, um, to be allowed within city limits by staff, uh, it was by written request, um, and that's where they put all of the information, um, within that permit application, so that, uh, there aren't a lot of changes back and forth between, um, changing an actual ordinance, is how they did it.
Does that have revision there, Paul? These days, with stop work, chicken. The one that, the one that we drafted did, this is very basic, um, so, yeah, that, it was very detailed as far as...
I made sure that I looked up every law, and made sure that it was all of the laws, um, and that it wasn't as generic as like, you know, it's like ten seconds, I'm like...
I mean, I'm supportive of re-bringing up our ordinance, um, and bringing that forward again, I mean, I think it was all over, and Shelly definitely did a lot of research, there's a lot of conversation that happened around that, we've now sent that, in my time, through abatement, others, one thing they did have to, you know, did choose to get rid of their, their chickens, and, um, that's unfortunate, um, but, I, I mean, I, I would be open to bringing that forward again, and seeing if there was any interest in that.
So, you wanna put that on the next agenda?
Yeah.
Always, you want to pull that same, same ordinance forward, correct?
I mean, I don't...
It makes sense to me. I think it was pretty well, it was done and drafted, and we had it on again, too long, and first reading at least, and it didn't get out, so, it's probably somewhere, you can just pull it out, I don't know what, what month that was, but it...
I have it in my...
I'm sure I have it, I have this copy, but it's, yeah, scribbled, it's a...
I, that was just with the staff updates.
Okay.
I, I didn't know if everybody, did you guys all have a chance to read the staff update that I put on the corner of the table? I read it, I read it.
You read it?
Yes, yes, we did that one, we read it. So, if you guys are okay with that, I will try and find a chicken ordinance that was already...
I'll just say that to you.
Oh, perfect.
I think, it might be the scribbled copy.
I'm sure we have, it's got, finding, finding, that was ready for...
Was that in the last email?
I can also look, I know, I do have a folder that is chapter fifty-five, that had some drive-throughs, I wonder... Oh, was that the, that must be the ordinance five-five-one, okay, so maybe I haven't come across it just yet?
This is probably February, March, of twenty-four.
And you think you still have it, Shelly?
I know I do, yeah.
Okay, perfect, if you wanna re-mail that to me, I will certainly take a look at it, and we can add the chicken ordinance for September agenda.
Unless you wanna take me down on the council agenda, I'll take the motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment, everybody?
Second.